The time being seven o'clock, I call the city council meeting to order. The city administrator has determined that an in-person meeting is not practical or prudent because of the COVID-19 pandemic and the declaration of federal, state, and local emergencies pursuant to Minnesota statutes, Chapter 12, and other laws. Further attendance of the meeting by any member of the city council, city staff, or public at the regular meeting location in the city council chambers is not feasible due to the COVID-19 pandemic enclosure of City Hall to members of the public. As a result of the foregoing, the special city council meeting will be conducted solely by telephone and other electronic means as provided in the Minnesota statute 13D.021, and no in-person meeting will be conducted in the city council chambers. I think it is important to recognize that using a video conference is not as good as in-person meeting, but it is necessary. Under the circumstances, we are doing the best that we can to maintain transparency and due process. I would appreciate everyone's patience and cooperation as we work through the meeting. Please stand for the Pledge of Allegiance.
I, Pledge of Allegiance, to the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Seeing that this meeting is being held remotely, when I call your name, please indicate your presence. Councilmember Balsonic. Councilmember Brax.
Present.
Councilmember Folch.
Present. It was hard to find the link, though. Maybe that's why he's not on.
Councilmember Leifeld.
Here.
Councilmember Lund.
Here.
Councilmember Vaughn. Let the roll reflect to that. Councilmembers are here except for Joe Balsonic at this time, but a quorum has been established. At this point, we will have a moment of silence for Bert Goderstedt. Bert was an active volunteer in the Hastings community. He served on the Heritage Preservation Commission for over 30 years, and he was instrumental in developing the city's original preservation ordinance. Bert passed away on April 26th. Let us recognize him with a moment of silence. I do want to say I did talk to Margaret today and wished her condolences from myself as a personal friend, but Margaret, I know you're out there listening, and I'm pretty certain that the council would like to wish you and your family condolences. Bert did so much for our community, and he was so appreciated. Are there any council members that would like to make a statement at all? Okay. Thank you, and we will move on to the approval of minutes. Councilmembers, are there any corrections in the minutes from the regular meeting of April 6th? Seeing none, they are approved. Councilmembers, are there any corrections to the minutes from the regular meeting of April 20th? Seeing none, they are approved. For public comments, we have options for comments to be emailed prior to the meeting as well as interaction featured during the meeting. For the emailed comments, they have been forwarded to the city council, and the receipt is acknowledged. Please recognize that items not on the agenda will not be discussed this evening. We ask the attendees use the raise hand feature, and they will be invited to speak one at a time. I also want to remind everyone that the public comment period is not intended for extended dialogue. Is there anyone here who would like to address the council? Okay. Councilmembers, are there any items to be considered? Counsel, I would accept a motion to approve the consent agenda.
Motion to approve.
Councilmember Brax. Councilmember Vaughn. Clerk Flattan, would you please call the roll?
Councilmember Vaughn.
Yes.
Councilmember Folch.
Yes.
Councilmember Leifeld.
Yes.
Councilmember Lund.
Yes.
Councilmember Brax.
Yes.
The motion prevails. Tonight, we have, under administration, we have the impact of the pandemic on the city's 2020 budget. For this item, we will have introduction by city administrator Dan Watich. Obviously, he's not being able to unmute. There you go.
Part of it's a mute, but I didn't even realize that was the problem. I thought I was trying to figure out the screen share. Give me a second here.
Okay.
And it looks like you've got my end. It looks like you've got the slideshow. Want to emphasize that really this presentation is looking at 2020 budget. You might think ahead a little bit to next year, '21, but really, the focus here is on One of the pieces that we talked about at our last meeting was cash flow over the summer, particularly during June and July. And where this particularly comes in is last week, the Dakota County Board approved baiting any late fees for property taxes. There's some exceptions for estro properties, public utilities, and railroads, but basically giving property owners a couple of extra months from mid-May to mid-July to pay their property taxes without penalty. With that is a change in the distribution dates from the county. Very much appreciate that they're speeding up the timing of processing those tax collections and getting the money passed on to the city, but in reality, the end date is further out. So instead of having the full distribution in early July, it pushes it out to the end of July, and actually is overall slower. Estimate that during June, it could be about an $800,000 use of existing fund balance in order to continue operations, and about $1.2 million in July in order to handle the delay in the tax payments. But these amounts are manageable, and I think that's the real key to this. Although it's manageable, it is possible that the cash flow could get too tight, whether it's a matter of a major expense. For example, construction projects are expensive. They generate big bills, and construction season is during the summer and fall. So if it's at a time where cash is tight, big bills are extra difficult to work with. The other way that cash flow could be impacted during June and July is if there were some significant shortfall in revenues, whether that's property tax delinquencies or the possibility of an unallotment of local government aid during July, which I'll explain more Briefly, there are three construction, major construction projects coming up this summer. One is the Mill and Overlay Project. It's about $500,000 through levy and state aid. It will be on the council's agenda in two weeks. That deadline is basically to meet the contract. When we opened bids nearly two months ago, there's a 60-day grace period with bid bond, so the price is good until late May. The council needs to make a decision whether or not to enter that contract then, so it'll be on your agenda on the 18th. The next project is trail reconstruction along General Seaband Drive. That is a combination of tax levy, fund balance, and local government aid paying for that quarter-million-dollar project. Right now, we're expecting to put that out for bid in June, so a month out before it even starts into process, but it's obviously another project. The third one is the neighborhood project, which involves street and curbs and sidewalks, sewer water. It's much more extensive. That project, although it might have the potential to impact cash flow in 2020, it really is probably more of a long-term concern in terms of impact on utility rates or taxes in '21 or future budgets. But obviously, when talking construction projects, it's tough not to list the big one, even though it's not really a 2020 concern. And later on the agenda, finance manager Melanie Lammers will go into more detail about how that project might be bonded for. The other comment I'd have on construction projects is the reason that these ones are highlighted, or construction is highlighted, is if we're looking at needing to make up dollars in a hurry, these are the big numbers. So it's big numbers, it's things that we can fairly quickly adjust and meet significant shortfalls. Those of those shortfalls come in with property taxes. We levy just under $15 million in property taxes. By looking at the city's experience during the Great Recession from 2007 to 2011, we had about a 5.5% to 8.5% delinquency each year. And based on our 2020 tax levy, that's somewhere between $800,000 and $1.2 million. So if there's a shortfall in property tax payments, it could easily be in the range of $1 million per year, maybe multiple years. Some of the questions really at this point are, how much would it be? When would it be? Do we see delinquencies here with the payments this summer? Is it something we don't start to see until fall? Is it something we don't see until next year, '21? Obviously, having less revenues is part of what we're looking at with adjusting for the budget this year. Piece of revenues is local government aid, which the city deliberately allocates towards capital expenses rather than ongoing operational expenses. But it's certainly a concern for the city because two items to it. One, in the recession a decade ago, a dozen years ago, the governor unallotted LGAs because of shortfalls in the state budget, and how can they make it up? After they had certified, after they had promised, here's the amount that the cities would get, they cut it and said, we're not going to make that payment, or the state's not going to make that payment. And here's where that's an potential concern for Hastings. If we're expecting $840,000 this year in 2020, we've already spent nearly half of that. We've spent $367,000. So if it's unallotted in July, we're in the hole already. If it's unallotted in December, those projects between now and then, we've got on hold. We might miss out on some important projects, but financially, we can swing it. If it's future years that they make reductions, which fully expect to be the case, that might hurt in terms of the services we provide that's easier to plan for, because it's something you could plan for instead of having to adjust on the fly. A brief overview, here's the types of capital projects that it is used for. These are actually from the city's 2020 budget. So the money we've already spent is for improvements at the pool, LED lighting at City Hall, a couple of police cars, a multi-purpose tractor, replacing computers. These are important projects for maintaining our existing assets, for public safety, for quality of life. And similar, when look at the projects that we've not spent yet and now have on hold, a couple of studies for operations of the fire department or our facilities citywide in terms of making sure that we're budgeting for their maintenance, a new Zamboni, more LED lighting, upgrading software for the accounting department, communications, so saving for communications equipment for police and fire, trail maintenance, trail reconstructions, and other park improvements. Again, these are matters of public safety and quality of life, and I believe certainly can see the importance of how this money could be spent. We do have a few strategies in place, or momentarily could be in place, to address these budgetary concerns. The Capital Equipment Plan, Capital Improvement Plan, is that list we just saw of LGA projects. The ones that we've not spent yet are on hold until we have a better feel for the state's budgetary picture, and if there might be LGA cuts, those are on hold until we have a better feel. Even if LGA is not cut or unallocated, it's possible that those could be some, could also serve as a place for savings for other general revenue shortfalls like the property We have put in place a temporary hiring freeze. Expect this to be for the next three, four months, but really a matter of, again, wanting to get a feel for where we're at on those revenue collections. So this is existing open positions, as well as a few positions that are expected to be open soon because of upcoming retirements later this summer. One piece that we know that, just as a matter of timing, is going to have an automatic impact is the seasonal maintenance crews that we might hire for parks and public works are not going to happen, and those duties wind up needing to be reassigned among the existing staff. I'm sure it'll affect some of the level of service that we're able to provide, but it's also the reality of working with a few less employees. I outline those construction projects. There's potential valor savings on those, and those will be on the council agenda in two weeks, the next meeting. And I should also note that, although I think that our staff is always cognizant of how they spend money, it's something that we've certainly been talking about over the last few weeks, and just a general heightened awareness about it. I actually had one of the departments ask, the building inspection, ask if they could purchase new books that are required with the newly updated building codes. They actually purchased it required by state law, and can we spend a few hundred dollars on that? It was something that needed to approve, but just as an example, that awareness that it isn't just half-million-dollar projects, but the things that could be a few hundred dollars, staff is very cognizant of also. Mentioned that a lot of this is a bit unknown at the moment, and we're trying to buy some time and have a feel for where we're at economically, as well as the city's finances. And there are a few indicators or signals that I think are important in order to start having a feel for where we're at. In a couple of examples I want to give, the estimate of the estro property taxes around 35% to 40% of the collections that we would expect. So that's the amount that should still be coming in by the regular tax date, May 15th. The county did not give them an extension. Through late April, we've seen 20% come in. So a matter of, if we look forward, May 15th, the deadline, how does that compare? Do we come in at that 35%, 40%, or is there a shortfall? And that could give us a better feel for what do property tax payments or potential delinquencies look like overall. Another example tomorrow, so we don't even have to wait very long, the state has a special updated budget forecast coming in. This is because of the economic situation that they're having this early forecast, but depending on what that reports could certainly give us some insight into, is local government aid likely to be cut this summer? Does it give us a feel for maybe it won't be till December, or potentially not till coming years? But as these signals come in, I think it's something that gives us some ability to adapt our strategies of our spending. I will stand for any questions.
Any questions, council? Councilmember Vaughn.
Thank you, Your Honor. Dan, you had mentioned a 5.5% to 8.5% per year reduction back in the recession. Is that, I just want to confirm, that's per year? That wasn't over the four years that you're talking about? Each year, you've seen a 5%?
Each year, yes. Excuse me. Yes, that's each year during that five-year period, there was a significant percentage of delinquencies.
Okay. Thank you.
Is that, Your Honor?
Yes. Go ahead, Councilmember Lund.
Thank you. Around that statistic, obviously, you're just looking at recent history as some sort of gauge to what we might expect. This is a different financial situation than the impetus for the Great Recession, obviously, virus versus banking practices and so forth. So the property tax is directly tied to foreclosure rate, and, you know, collection on that is directly tied to foreclosure rate or delinquency on mortgages or whatever, right? So, and then also plummeting values, too, I would imagine. Is there any, outside of this, is there any indicators that this might be what we see going forward? You know, not just in Hastings, but in general, that this is a realistic number to kind of benchmark off of? You know what I'm asking?
You're asking for some real tea leaves? The, over the last six weeks, give or take, the statistics of a few weeks old, or a few days older, it was last week. Over the last six weeks, roughly 19%, and this is countrywide, and obviously, it'll vary various different regions, as well as certainly some different demographics, but 19% of the workforce has filed for unemployment in the last six weeks. One in five workers are seeing some sort of financial reductions and difficulty in their job. So I haven't seen anything yet with pushers or some of the property value pieces that you just mentioned. We don't have to look very far to see that there's some real economic stress out there. How that plays out with property taxes, don't really know. It's going to, here's some real statistics that we had from another recent, ten years ago, significant recession, and using that as a benchmark to at least have an estimate, what might we be looking at.
Your Honor, this is Tina.
For Councilmember Folch.
Thank you. A couple comments. Last Friday on April 24th, I participated in two conference calls, which I just wanted to share a little information. The first was the governor, through the League of Minnesota Cities, had held a webinar with city officials, and in that, he did talk about LGA, and he said that he is committed to keeping the LGA and not seeing an unallotment occur. He thinks, he had said it was a centerpiece to help Minnesota in, and so he was being very positive, and he expressed willingness to dip into the Rainy Day Fund to hold on to, in honor, that commitment to local government for LGA. After that, in the morning, on Fridays, there's been another business conference call that's been occurring that the chamber has been facilitating through Christie Bars, and in that, there have been, you know, various local officials that are on it in regard, in supplement to our business community, and so myself and Mere Fassbender and John Hensman have been participating. Mike Slavic from Dakota County has also been participating, and he said something that really caught my ear. He had said that the county, that the board members are getting constant updates from staff, but they are, they are expecting that there could be a reduction of property taxes between 5% to 25%. And so, of course, that becomes very alarming when you look at that range. And so I, I thought it was, would be prudent for us to really, to really look at worst-case scenario, what if it was a 25% reduction in property taxes and our revenues being collected? And so with that, I was wondering, for the projects that are on hold currently, and also with the construction projects, like for instance, the trail project that you're looking at bidding next month, have you been, have you been prioritizing these budget expenditures that haven't been obligated yet? I mean, have you gone through, and like, for instance, when I've gone through these kinds of exercises in the past, we did priority A and priority B and priority C, and then defined, you know, how those categorizations were working, why it was, you know, particular projects were falling into those. And so I was wondering, and I'm very thankful that you have put those things on hold, but how are you looking at funding those as we're moving forward? Would you go?
In terms of the prioritization of those projects, no. At this point, they're all on hold. So they have not been in sort of different rank order.
So have you had thoughts about how it is that you're going to go about as we're moving forward in planning? I mean, what are your key milestones? For instance, are you waiting to see what the county is able to collect and provide to the city by July? Or what are your touchstones for making decisions at this point that you would advise?
I think the state-- I, I think the state budget forecast tomorrow will be very informative. As you indicated, the governor might be committed to trying to preserve LGA and willingness to dip into the rainy day fund. I believe that statutorily, he was required to dip into the rainy day fund, which is what happened ten, twelve years ago, less of a rainy day fund at that point, I think. But the, the state still, or the governor at that time, still had to hunt a lot, even though there was a rainy day fund. But I think that that report tomorrow will be informative. I think that over the next couple of months, what we actually see for property tax collections will certainly be very informative. For example, if we expect thirty-five to forty percent of the taxes, property taxes should be paid by May fifteenth, because they do not have the, the extension or the waiver of their late fees, that actually look like come May fifteenth? Is it in line with that thirty-five, forty percent or is it?
Sure. Is what you're referring to is that the escrowed property taxes, that they're kind of a, you know, a sure shoe-in and then it's that, it's everything else that speculative as to whether or not it'll come in?
And we'll, we'll be seeing how that comes in over May, June and, and July. But until they're paid, it's, it's, it's trying to, to use some proxies and see, even though they might not have had the waivers where their payments, it still came in in May. Or is everything pushed out to the, the last minute? Sort of using those, those in-between dates or payment dates from the county would certainly be helpful to give a clue for how taxes are, are looking.
Thank you.
Counselor member Vaughn?
Thank you, Your Honor. Counselor member Foltz, I, I just have a question. You, you mentioned your calls with the county and twenty-five percent possibly worst case scenario. I, I'm assuming, but I'm just looking for clarification from you, that includes everything, so commercial and residential, right?
It was Commissioner Mike Slavick's comment and he had said it was specifically pertaining to property taxes because the county board had made the decision that they were going to not penalize late payments until, I'm looking at my notes, I want to say it's like July fifteenth or something like that. And then after that point, interest will be accrued. And so, but he did say that, that, yeah, the range that they were kind of bracing for was that five to twenty-five percent of property taxes not being collected. That's what I wrote down.
Okay, but no clarity on if it was residential and commercial or if it was?
He just said in, it was generally kind of lumped it all together. I see what you're saying. He didn't splice it out.
Yeah, yeah. We, you know, our, our ratio is a little different than, you know, some of the other, other municipalities, so it may be different here, but just curious, thank you.
Yep.
Counselor member Balsanik, did you have a comment? No. There you go.
Can you hear me now?
I can.
I sound like a TV commercial. Yes, just to say I'm on board here right now and gonna try and catch up to speed here on what's going on. Thank you.
Any other discussion from counsel?
Yes, I just have, Your Honor, it's Tina again, I'm sorry.
You're fine.
So I just have one last question then. So you said for our next council meeting on May eighteenth, that we needed to make a decision on the Mill and Overlay project, that the bonds, the bid bonds would expire between our next meeting and the one after that. And so we need to make a decision. And so how is it that you're proposing that we make that decision in two weeks when there's so many unknowns? And I, I'm sorry, did I break down what you said it was going to be? It was a five hundred thousand dollar expenditure and what should we be taking into consideration between here and then, sir?
Yeah, it's about a five hundred thousand dollar project, about three hundred thousand of that coming from levy. And yes, there is a deadline of May eighteenth. I would be comfortable recommending not doing it, period, right now. But recognize we've got two weeks to see if we might be able to learn more between now and then, or give counsel a chance to see and think about the, the materials here rather than forcing the decision tonight, introducing it so that you have some familiarity with it to make a decision in two weeks. It's possible that we'll get some real rosy leaders between now and then. We've got that state budget forecast coming tomorrow. We probably will not have the final tally of what, what property tax payments have been made by May fifteenth, but we might have an updated figure to that, that deadline. So it's possible that there could be some real rosy numbers that give some confidence that would, would give counsel reason to, to decide to move forward with that project. But I expect my recommendation will be not to do it. It, it's a quick place to pick up big numbers.
Your Honor?
Member Vaughn? Oh, sorry.
Thank you, Your Honor. And thanks for the staff for putting this together for us. And I agree, we gotta see what we see with our numbers coming up. But if we're looking for any guidance, how I was thinking, I think they gave us some options. I'd like to break it out of the LGA. I think they did the right thing. Let's just hold off on those last purchases and let's see what happens with the funding. I think the, as counsel member Foltz talked about, the economics, or what we're hearing from the state is it's probably going to be there, but we should safely just wait to make sure we have the money before we spend the rest, in my opinion, on this. But going to the next one, Seth put some good numbers in here and I, I want us to see what's going to happen in the next few weeks, but I'm leaning more towards put that, keep the hiring freeze on. You can see that it's got a large savings for us. And I look at the three projects that were in front of us, this North Ridge, we already kicked the can one year. We were supposed to do that last year, we didn't have enough funding. And I had to think, and they go to the trail project, it's beyond fixing, it needs to be repaired, it's in tough shape. And then the last one is Fifteenth Street, that's a state aid road project, the prices are only going to go up if we delay it. And then also, will we get any state funding for the future? The unknown with that also. That's what I lean more to, let's do the hiring freeze and, and try to get these projects done. And then when we go into the twenty twenty-one budget, we could start to look at the next step of what they are. But that's my recommendation that we are, at this, I like what was in front of us, but I think we should look at these indicators. But to delay a project, I don't know if I would be doing that, that's what my concern.
Okay. Counselor member Vaughn?
Thank you, Your Honor. Are we migrating to the second item on the agenda here, talking about the construction projects? Is it, or is it kind of all, all in one or?
Well, Melly, Melanie will give us an update. Are there any other questions on Dan's question at this time?
Well, I, I'll ask the question and if it's more appropriate to wait till the next second, we can do that. So my, my concern about these construction projects is multi, multifold. One is, you know, what does that do to our, our budget current state? But then also, what does that look like to those that are paying assessments? So I understand counsel member Vaughn's point, but things are different now for individual homeowners as well. And I think we really need to look at, look at that. I know in the packet, something was being explored to extend that payment period out over five more years, if they so chose to take that route, that's certainly an option. Yeah, I'd, I'd like to, since we have a couple more weeks, this is more of a discussion point, I'd like to ask that we look for other creative ways to make that less burdensome in the short term. Extending something is certainly a good option, but it still requires payments in the fall. And that, that may be smaller payments than that would have been, but it's still additional payments on top of a household that maybe has less money than they did a couple of months ago. So good deal or not, it's still more money than they, they maybe have to spend. So I just want to make sure that we're, we're looking at, looking at the assessment side just as much as we're looking at the city budget and LGA and, and, you know, bonding and all that kind of stuff. I, I really think that we need to take that into account because we don't know how much the property values have changed either, right? Or will change, so. Next couple of weeks and maybe if we can find a couple of different options for, for how to get that accomplished, that would make it easier to move forward with the project, in my opinion.
Counselor member Brax?
Yeah, along the same lines as Trevor just mentioned, I was thinking today about if there would be a way that we could expand our assessments program to help abate more assessments than we have in past years. And I know that we do that with money from, I believe, Dakota County Community Development Block Grants. Am I saying that correctly?
Yes.
Okay. So I know, I'm just spitballing here and I realized that as everyone's budgets from the state to the county to the city start to constrict, this may not be a feasible option. But if there is a way to pump some money into that abatement of assessment program, it may be a good year to look at expanding that if we can. And I certainly don't want to take away from something else, but I think it would be something that we could consider as kind of what Trevor was saying, additional options for if we're going to proceed with some of these programs that we have, some assistance available for people whose circumstances have dramatically changed. And I don't know what that looks like and I don't, I don't want to propose a solution, but I, it's just something that I was thinking about today also in, in how we could help people, you know, a seven thousand dollar bill, an eight thousand dollar bill is a lot in a normal time and in a not normal time where their personal income is way down, it's, it's almost an impossibility. So I think we should just consider that when we decide about some of these projects.
Okay. Thank you. Any other discussion, counsel?
Your Honor, it's Tina again.
Okay.
Um, I concur with Lori and Trevor and what they just said. And, and also, you know, I think that what we had discussed at our last council meeting is that there's a possibility that there'll be stimulus money that the federal government will pass. God only knows what's going to happen with the bonding bill at the state level right now, since it sounds like there's some partisan bickering going on whether or not that'll move forward. And so, but I, as we discussed last time, the stimulus funds were made allowable for roadway improvement projects. And so it might be better timing to hold on to the roadway projects and have them in our back pocket. And then when the stimulus funding come, if, you know, if and when, you know, hopefully that we could, you know, apply funds towards that. And so it's just an idea.
Balsanik?
Thank you, Your Honor. Just to give a little perspective on the state of the, of the state financially, I just want to tip by hat to the previous governor and his administration, Governor Dayton. What was done a few years ago was to develop and put away funds for a thing like this. And we know that the surplus is probably dwindling, you know, by the minute. But in that rainy day fund, the state has approximately two point two billion dollars, that's billion with a B, as a backup so that the state doesn't run into the red. Where that money is going to go, I don't know, but it is reassuring to me that from the state level on down, there is a rainy day fund that is out there. On the national level, things that I've read are disturbing. When I see our congressional members talking about states declaring bankruptcy and even, you know, local governments declaring bankruptcy, somebody needs to remind them up at the federal level that cities such as us are apolitical. We have no political affiliation whatsoever. And we have balanced our budgets over the years. We've spent prudently on, on the things that we bring to our citizens that they expect from us. And I, I find it distasteful that at the federal level, we've got congressmen and senators who are saying that we don't count, that, that, you know, what we're asking for may be frivolous. And that is far from the truth. We're a good city. We've spent wisely over the years. And in this time where we've got dwindling income from our parks and recreation, from, you know, the property tax problem and so on and so forth, they need to recognize that we have a dilemma as much as they do at the federal level. So I, this is addressed not to the council and not to the citizens of Hastings, but to the federal government. We need some help and we do expect that will happen if we can get the politics set aside in the long run. Thank you, Your Honor.
Any other discussion?
Thank you, Dan. Tina, it's Tina, just one more time, since Joe mentioned federal assistance. And so currently, the city can ask for reimbursement through the CARES Act. And in the, one of the last updates that was provided to us, it did mention that, and the police department was in charge of collecting the expenditures. And so I would be curious at our next council meeting to hear what's the running tally to date for the expenditures that are currently eligible for reimbursement from the federal government through that act? What Joe was, was referring to is that difference. So the city can ask for reimbursement on expenditures due to COVID-19, like for instance, supplies that had to be purchased or overtime, things of that nature. However, we can't ask for loss of revenue. And so that goes back to the conversation about, okay, if we had a five to twenty-five percent reduction in property tax revenue, how do we make that up? And, and so that's what Joe was referring to, is that currently Congress is unwilling to, or more specifically in the Senate, to make concessions to help provide assistance to a local and state government. And so I've been seeing emails that are coming through from the National League of Cities asking for city officials to contact- emails that are coming through from the National League of Cities, asking for city officials to contact their representatives in Congress uh to ask for them to support legislation that they've been advocating for on our behalf to make sure that we're um included in those bailouts. I mean, it's like when they're looking at billing out airlines and hotels and stuff, but yet they want to let local government um go belly up. Uh that does get concerning. And so I might be happy to pass on those emails when I see them come through from the National League Cities. It would be maybe it would be a good idea um for some of us to actually call and, and let them know that we care here in Minnesota too. So that's it. Thanks.
Thank you. All right, uh bonding and construction projects update. Melanie, welcome.
Thank you, mayor. Good evening, everyone. I am going to talk a little bit about the memo um about bonding and our construction project. Um that will be coming before you on May 18th. This is our big street reconstruction project. Um and it's paid for taking out debt, which is a little different than the levy discussion that we've just been having. And what makes that different is our first debt payment um will not be due until 2022. If we take out debt like we traditionally have in the past. So the first time we will need to collect payment for this street reconstruction project would be our 2021 tax levy. So that makes it part of the 2020 budget process. So this is more talking about future expenses. Um if you look at the memo that was in your packet, um I did lay out the current 2020 tax levy and the proposed or projected 2021 tax levy. In 2020, we currently have a debt levy of about 2.7 million dollars. If we don't do any projects or take any debt out and we don't plan anything, our debt levy will actually go down to 2.5 million next year, which means that it will be $245,000 lower than it is this year. And the reason for that is because of the way that we do our debt pro- in our projects. We take out 10-year notes on our reconstruction projects. So every year we have debt falling off and we're putting debt back on. So I know in our last year's budget sessions and the prior year, we talked about we have some large debt coming off in 2021, which opens up a lot of capacity for the city. The 2020 project is anticipated to require about $185,000 worth of tax levy. Um I did put a projection in there and that's all that is, is a projection. Looking at some plans we've talked about in our capital, in our equipment and our capital prop plans, we, there's a lot of big projects out there right now that we would have the capacity, you know, in light of, we didn't know that everything was going to happen like this, but we were talking about fixing the dome. If, if we don't get the bonding dollars for it, you know, moving forward and taking out debt for that. We were talking about fire trucks. We were talking about new radios for the police and fire, which is also a huge expense. So none of that is set in stone. It's just I wanted to kind of demonstrate, you know, wh- where the plan could go. And that's that 2021 projected debt, that 2.7 to 2.9. Um if we decide to just do the street project, our uh debt levy will still go down 60,000 in 2021. So I think the bigger piece of this, when we start talking about what are our options for the debt next year, um we're, we're kind of looking at those special assessments tying that together with the debt because with the debt, we'll have the special assessments that will go out to the residents. Traditionally, they would be assessed to the tax rolls over 10 years. Um one thing we could do, we could expand the debt to a 15-year repayment schedule. And that would expand the special assessments to a 15-year schedule as well, which lowers the principal payment each year. The other thing that we could do is move our first um principal payment on the debt out to 2023. Um we would be paying more interest upfront doing that. Um it, but it would essentially, we'd have a much lower levy as a result of it. Um and as far as the special assessments, um state statute requires that the year that the, the special assessments are approved by the city council is the year that they need to be certified to the tax rolls for collection in the next year. So the only way to delay the special assessments out to 2022 would be to not approve them until 2021. Kind of a, it's kind of a backwards way of doing things, but that could be um part of the discussion tonight if we wanted it to be. That is, you know, there was a few other pieces in the memo talking about there's an opportunity to lower the special assessments slightly and still stay at that 20% threshold for our debt. And we also talked a little bit about that Dakota County CDA grant. And um we have 71,000 available for this project. Um being jobless isn't a qualification in itself. It is a factor in the determination of who gets the grants and how much. So with that, I'm here to answer any questions. And uh here are your thoughts.
Councilmember Lund?
Uh thank you. Uh Melanie, I, I think the answer is yes, but just let me know. Um every year, every time we have that um economic assistance um for those that aren't able to afford the assessments fully, that, that gets depleted, correct? It's always used, is that right?
No, I don't believe it gets fully used every year. I think it depends project to project.
Okay. Well, we, do we have a good idea of, of that? Cause I mean, I, I, for some reason, I thought that it, it was pretty well drained every time. Uh maybe Nick can answer that too. I don't know.
I sure can. Uh last year, we had a really heavy use of it. It was, we had previously uh determined to have, I think it was around $90,000 assigned towards assessment abatement and we had uh a, a very, a very big project for one, but quite a few applications, probably just by nature of the, the number of properties we impacted. Total demand for abatement and qualifications for abatement were about 110 or 111,000. And the, the CDA and the city worked together to make an adjustment to uh what amount of funds were then assigned for assessment abatement to match that, that need at the time. Historically speaking though, uh in most years prior to that, we, we do tend to underutilize what we set aside, uh at least by a little bit. So um you know, of course, this year could be shaping up to be quite different than that, but uh just to give a little bit of history on, on how that has worked over the years.
The perspective is, it's a mixed bag, so it doesn't always get used, but 2019 in general was a fairly favorable economic year for, for uh most. And that was a large project. This is going to be a large project and we're in a very different economic situation. So it's, it's reasonable to think that this is going to be demanded and underfunded. It's more of a comment than a question.
Okay. Councilmember La- Brax?
So Melanie, my question is a little bit, um just trying to analogize this to, you know, city finance to my own personal finances. But is it your recommendation that we do take out additional debt even in a year where we're unsure where our revenue is going to come from or, or the consistency of that revenue? I mean, we really don't know what's going to happen the rest of this year and next year. For me personally, when I'm unsure of what's going to happen, I don't, you know, take out a new monthly subscription. I don't um sign up for anything that I know I'm going to have to pay monthly. I don't go buy a new car. I don't. There's a series of things that I would immediately kind of tighten the belt on so that I am not getting beyond um what I think is financially prudent. What is the, and, and I know, I know through your memo, you propose a lot of options, but um is there, what is in more, in your opinion, the most financially sound decision to make? You know, if we're looking at the worst case scenario, is it to not utilize debt? Is it to utilize less debt? What is this, your suggestion that is most financially wise?
Yeah, I'd uh, if I knew the answer to that question. Um I think the challenge with all of this is we don't really know. I mean, if it is going to be a worst case scenario, it's, it's one of those things, but the thing about um you know, we, we plan for the debt. We, you know, if we have to lower our levy, there's several areas we can do that in. Um it just depends on if you, if, if you feel more comfortable delaying projects now or if we forward. The, the interesting thing about our finances is typically, we're going to see the biggest impact after the event because everything is cyclical. So I already know that our property tax um values are going up 4.7% next year. So that's not going to change. So we're not going to start seeing the reduction. It comes after the fact. It's delayed. So it really, depending on how deep this goes and how far we need to cut, it's, you know, I know a lot of cities are still moving forward with their road projects at this time, but it might be next year when we have to delay that. It just it's kind of, it's a mixed bag. It really, it's whatever you guys are comfortable with. Thank you.
Yeah, tough decisions. I, I want to put any more stress on residents. I, I just, I have a feeling that um people are going to be strapped and people, they're not only being furloughed now, they're actually loo- some are losing their jobs. And um I look at the area where the project is. Uh there's a, I don't know, there's just, there's a lot of homes and I'm, I have a huge concern for spending money. You know, we have to lead by example. Tighten my belts, I'm not working. I'm sure many other people are. And I really have a hard time spending money when we are so unsure. Going to go. So. Guess I'd have to defer to Nick and Melanie um and, and have, take everybody's um comments into consideration, but any other questions or comments for Melanie at this time? Okay. Thank you, Melanie. Any other comments from you?
Uh not, not tonight, but I, I jotted down a couple of things that I, I heard from council members in that discussion that I'll make sure fleshed out a little bit for
Okay, great. Thank you. Okay. Uh expansion area for downtown businesses. This item was actually requested by uh on the agenda by councilmembers Bolt and Councilmember Lund. Uh would one of you like to um introduce this topic?
Sure, your honor, I'd be happy to at this point. So um as I had mentioned um earlier, there's been some subgroups. Um one of them is our Hastings Economic Task Force, uh specifically to deal with uh COVID. And so in that, it's been myself, Councilmember Lund and Mayor Fassbender, along with Christie Bars of the Chamber and uh Bruce, uh my god, Bruce's last name is Gobler, Gob- Goblish? Thank you very much. And so um in our discussions, we have been trying, you know, brainstorm about how is it that we can um help our business community. Uh we've been, uh we did a, a business survey. We have uh been helping to, you know, form uh what our grant program will look like through HEDRA and another issue we've talked about, or some of the other things that we can do to help um businesses. And so we've had discussion about um how can we um from a policy perspective, we try to be supportive of our business community on knowing that once things start opening back up, there'll probably be reductions in capacity that will be allowed within stores. Um as a, for instance, you're seeing in some of the states that are reopening or other countries where they'll start like maybe only 25% of the um, the normal capacity within particularly in bars and restaurants and things of that nature. So uh so some discussions then happened with uh the leadership of the Downtown Business Association. And uh so their board brought forward, they sent a, an email to all of us, you know, in the form of a letter instead of being a, you know, written letter, it was an email, but to all of us where they are interested. Um and just moving forward and beginning to have conversations with the city about looking at what are some of the possible out of the box, you know, like creative thinking, things that we could do to help uh their, their concerns specifically with the downtown area because it's the Downtown Business Association. And so um I'm, we're not looking for the council to make um a decision, you know, tonight about in their request, they were looking at, well, possibly uh closing down part, parts of um Main Street uh to make a pedestrian mall. Um just with the idea of like, how can we support our local businesses that um may need to think creatively, like for instance, if you can't have um 20 have 25% of your normal capacity within a, you know, a bar or restaurant, can we expand to patio areas outside as a, for instance? And could we possibly expand the patios that are in the downtown? And, and when you think about it, I think that there's eight restaurants and bars downtown. Seven of them are right between that block between the bridge and then Ramsey and then the Onion and the Legion, you know, wrap around the corner, right? So it's kind of a, a condensed area. And so um so the, the Downtown Business Association hasn't had the opportunity to fully vet it with the membership, but the board members were interested in um asking for uh city staff to begin to have those conversations with them as to um what might be feasible. Uh tomorrow is the DBA's monthly meeting that they have with their full membership. And so it's on their agenda to have a fuller conversation. And so um and, and we as council members have received some email correspondences from some of the members who um would like, who don't want to see the, you know, the whole downtown uh Main Street close. And so so, and then the other context that Trevor and I were hoping to have, you know, a discussion with the council as a whole, then is just, you know, not just concentrating on the downtown, love our downtown, but how do we also be supportive of the business community um within Hastings as a whole? You know, like for instance, I think of uh Pub 55. They have a little outside patio that abuts up against their, their parking, right? And so um could they expand their patio into their parking area and, you know, and fence it off? Um and, and, and for us to be flexible and, you know, with their car count is, I, I forget what all of the nuances are for when you have um businesses and what the per stall is, you know, based on customer volumes and things like that. But just, you know, what can we do to be flexible? Um because, you know, this isn't going away anytime like soon, is probably going to linger all summer long. Last Friday, uh again, the chamber had another uh conference call. It was the president of the um Regina Hospital. Now she, so our Regina Hospital is a part of the Alina Healthcare System. And so it was the morning after the governor had uh extended the stay-at-home order. And so she's had like fresh off the press, the newest modeling information. And what Alina Healthcare is predicting is that our new peak will now be the week of August 5th. And she had shared that their ICU bed capacity actually hit week of June 24th. And so um so going, you know, all July um through August uh will be kind of the worst of it. And so what I'm trying to get at is that uh we may start seeing restrictions and as the governor likes to say is, you know, turn up the dial as to letting businesses resume again. But as people become more and more ill and the spread begins to happen, and we all know people who will become afflicted, um how do we offset so people, um how can they feel safe and how can we help businesses resume business um in creative and new manners, um just to help, you know, to help, you know, our economy and our and our and our community so that, um, when we pull through this, it might be next year, you know, before we see, uh, COVID begin to be tamed. Um, so how do we, how do we help our business community the best? And so Trevor, I know I just went on a long rant there, but so please, please add, um, you know, any comments that you'd like to say.
Member Lund. Thank you. So, um, specifically on the agenda was to discuss expanding the footprint of, um, the downtown area. Um, and Councilmember Folch points out, and I think it's really important, um, that this town is much bigger than just, uh, a few blocks. Um, we pride ourselves in the downtown and there's a lot of important businesses down there, but we need to also think about, um, you know, the actions that we 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 do and the benefits we provide to businesses downtown. How does that, how does that look elsewhere throughout town? So, uh, you know, the DBA is organized and that's not always the case for every other business, um, area in town. So they they do get the, the voice that sometimes we don't always hear from, from collective groups elsewhere. So I just want to point that out. But, um, there's also a difference of opinion, uh, on this whole concept, right? There's restaurants and bars down there and then there's, um, other types of businesses that maybe don't have the same, um, challenges. They're different challenges. Um, and so we need to understand how to address that. Um, I think it would be great for, um, for that conversation to continue on. But what that also requires is that the seven of us are willing to listen to these creative ideas that require staff to make suggestions of, you know, what's possible. Hey, you know, we could do this, we could do that. Um, the the idea that was floated in our task force meetings was expanding the footprint. Now, that doesn't necessarily mean all or nothing. Um, that could just be, um, from the bridge to Sibley, like Tina just, like Councilmember Folch just said, and then maybe from Sibley to, uh, further out, you know, it's it's not because there's no restaurants on that block, right? So it it maybe is is something like that, or maybe it's just weekends or whatever. It it my my, I guess my point is let's, let's have that conversation, let those groups have that conversation, let's make some recommendations. And then the challenge for us is to try to figure out how we can say yes where possible, um, albeit temporary, right? Um, maybe even signage restrictions or, you know, whatever it might be. Because there's, there, all of the businesses in town, for the most part, that are customer facing, um, uh, retail or otherwise, are going to have new ways of doing business that they're maybe not prepared for or maybe don't have the infrastructure for right now that they may need to just operate differently. And and we need to be able to be willing to relax certain things in order to make that happen. Being very vague, but the the that's on purpose because we don't know what those things are yet. But as they come up, I encourage all of us to, um, see it as a temporary way to help out that isn't necessarily doling out checks that we don't have the money for. Um, there's other ways that we can help, um, that can really be beneficial, but don't cost us waiving fees or or giving, giving out grants, which are also part of the the deal, but not the only thing.
The council discussion? Councilmember Vaughn?
Thank you. I I appreciate the conversation, but I want to take a role. What is our role here as council members? And I think it sounds like from the emails I receive and the first letter I got, yeah, and it sounds like they're going to have another meeting. That they're just asking for open the conversation. Who wouldn't be open to ideas? But I think the DBA needs to come into, DBA is like an each way to me as a council member. I don't want to be in the middle of the DBA when I seen conflicting letter to what some are saying, don't do that. So I would encourage the DBA to have a good conversation, have good votes and make sure everybody's getting represented so we don't get stuck in the middle of one says yes, one says no. And I want to, I think also a lot of talk about it, we need to look bigger than this. Not only food and restaurants, there's other businesses that are, um, that are going to need some help, maybe need some ideas, but role as a council is, I think, I think how we could help immediately is try to push the shop local. We need to help these people understand to get through these tough times. Uh, and how do we do that? I don't know. I mean, but I think our communication should be with the chamber and in our residences, let's keep our dollars in town as much as we can so we can all limp through this together and try to see the other side of it. But I I'm going to share, I'm I'm worried about safety first. And when I seen the letter expanding into the street, I'm saying right away, whoa, that that street is owned by the residents of this community and I want to make sure it's safe too. And I want to make sure that everybody agrees to that. I'm, that's why I think it's important, like when we do the car show, we we make sure those come in front of us and we approve as a body that we get to shut down the street for that day so we can make sure we notify the neighbors that live down there and the rest of the residents. I like that approach, um, but I'm open to listening to other items, but I don't want to get into dialogue every two weeks with another idea from a business that we all kind of hash out and say, do we approve of that? I think our experts are our staff. They'll know of the guidance of safety, can this be done and how long should it be done? That's how I like to defer this conversation going forward.
Mayor Mary, may I respond to Mark real quick?
Sure.
Thank you. Um, Mark, we, I'm sure Trevor agrees with everything you just said, that we care about those things as well. And so, um, as I began to say, asking for the council to make a decision this evening about, can't let shit down all of downtown, right? No, rather, um, our experience has been, you know, the last, well, my experience has been last three years that we've been on the council is that the staff look for direction from the council, um, as to what direction they would, uh, like for us proceed. And so I thought that, um, it was important to put this on the council agenda so that we had the opportunity to have a discussion altogether about this important topic and that so that, uh, staff could feel more confident that they would be supported, um, in moving in in that direction. And so, um, Trevor, I'm not sure if you would agree with my statement, but that's how I was looking at it and I was hoping that we could have this conversation so that we're all kind of on the same page about the direction we'd like to see because we have two weeks until things on the dial starts to turn up again. And, uh, and so it'd be terrific if we could see some kind of movement within that time.
Yeah. Well, Sonic? Oh, sorry, Trevor.
Uh, thank you, Your Honor. Could you hear me all right?
Yes.
Okay. Uh, well, again, it it, I I look at what the role of the city council is, and that is to set policy. I don't think we're here to decide whether to close off Second Street at Ramsey or Sibley or anything like that. Think what we should do is say, yes, we are open to anybody in business thinking outside of the box. Uh, the DBA, I've had a lot of experience working with them. Uh, we need to remind ourselves that not all businesses in the downtown historic area are members of the DBA. And because of that, you're going to have a lot of pushback, which I've been receiving, uh, over the last week, more so on this than I have in the last six months on anything else. Uh, what I would say is come to us with a plan. Uh, let us know, I think you, the DBA is a starting point because that's where we did begin. The DBA needs to go downtown business by business and say, what do you think of this? Uh, if we do it and you don't like it, how can we accommodate you, et cetera, et cetera? Uh, but understand businesses that the city council is making a policy decision that we are trying to allow you to be creative. Uh, and that certainly can happen with any, uh, area in in the city. The, uh, the midtown area, uh, the, uh, the Highway 55 strip, uh, the southern end of of the city going down Vermillion Street, uh, all of these, it's really up to them to come to us and say, this is what we want to do. But what I would strongly suggest is that they go to the staff. As Councilmember Vaughn said, I believe, go to the staff and say, this is what we would like to do because the staff is going to know what we can do for police protection, what we can do in terms of public works, uh, for providing barriers and so forth, what we can do with our wonderful police reserve. Uh, and then what we have to look at is are we spreading ourselves too thinly? Uh, uh, where we may have to make choices as to, you know, we, Plan A is good, but, uh, on the other side of town, Plan B, you're going to take up too much, uh, in terms of city resources. But the bottom line is, like I say, a policymaking body. So if we need a vote, I would suggest that we vote for a policy that says, yes, we are open to this, but you need to come up with a very solid plan, uh, that is going to be supported by the city staff. Your Honor.
Sure, Councilmember Lund?
Thank you, Your Honor. Thank you, Councilmember Balsonic. No, I, uh, I think the intent, I know the intent of of having it on the agenda today was not to vote on anything, but to be, um, better poised to, um, be in a, in a position of, of, um, not reacting, but rather being prepared for, right? So, um, we can, um, get good advice from staff and from the DBA and other businesses around town, um, and we can actually make a a decision on something brought before us instead of all of us trying to, um, cobble something together during, during a council meeting. That was not the point. But I think if we have this conversation today, then we're better prepared next, you know, neck in two weeks or whatever to have, you know, have a a better conversation and hopefully some plan in front of us or options in front of us to to go off of, um, that incorporate feedback from the business owners. Because I know there are differences of opinion, like you mentioned, but, um, my hope is that just like you said, and, um, you know, we'll be looking at something if they so choose in a couple of weeks that we can make some decisions on to help them out.
Your Honor. Finish, Joe, go ahead. Councilmember Balsonic.
Oh, no, let Councilmember Lyfield talk. I, yeah, go ahead.
Councilmember Lyfield?
Thank you, Your Honor. You know, in talking, um, with Amy Fox about this, we feel like we, it kind of went astray. Um, at the original goal of the email was to start the dialogue of thinking outside the box. It wasn't to say, hey, let's shut down Second Street. It was, here's one of the ideas, spoke to her myself, these are exact words. It wasn't to say, yes, let's shut down Second Street. It was to say, hey, you guys, let's get together and talk about this and let's find ways, because like everyone's saying, there's lots of different business needs down there. We got to worry, you know, we've got elderly people, we got handicapped people, you know, um, people who have to carry goods from a location who can't park a few blocks away, that type of thing. So I think the purpose was, this was one idea that they were looking at, you know, uh, developing and seeing where the dialogue can go from there. So I think from our standpoint, as everyone's saying, is, you know, the conversations with the business owners themselves, whether it be, you know, the DBA that we're talking about downtown, or whether it be any other part of town is just letting people think outside the box. And I think I heard one of the council members say, you know, not putting up the the no thinking, you know, let's, let's listen to what people have for ideas. And as a city, what is it we can do to help, um, you know, support them during really difficult economic times? So, just thought.
Sure. Councilmember Brax?
So the thing I've been thinking about the most is just the overwhelming amount of need that is not only going to be in our community, not only from businesses, but is also from residents. And I agree with Councilmember Vaughn because we are representatives of both business partners and community members and churches and all kinds of different entities, nonprofits that are run, that are going to take a hit. And so I think the important thing we need to think about is how are we going to approach all these organizations and people in a comprehensive way with the resources that we have? And I think that we've already talked about how our resources could be less. So we need to really seriously think about creating policies and programs that we know that we can help the most people with. And I don't, I agree with every, everything that's already been said. We don't need to get down a rabbit hole because I think the most creative ideas are going to come from the people who run the businesses themselves. They are in the best position to have the best ideas about what would help them. And I certainly don't want to impose on them what I think is the best thing for them to do. Um, they don't need my ideas necessarily, but I I want to be open and I want to collaborate and I want to be a good partner. Um, I'm just concerned about the overwhelming amount of need that there's going to be and that if we don't have a longer discussion than right now in this council meeting about how we're going to approach all these needs in a really systematic way that's fair and equitable, then we're going to be constantly handling new requests. So I think we need to really have that conversation and maybe it's not at a council meeting, maybe it's a workshop where we have a discussion about all the different possibilities that we have in front of us, like assessments and businesses. And there's just so many different ways that people are going to need help and we're just going to have to decide what those ways are going to be that we're going to be able to help and other ways that we're not because our budget isn't going to allow for it. And maybe some of the ways that we've already done things, like we've set up the heart grants and we have talked about license fees and we've talked about basketball hoops and we have been doing a lot of things already. So I think that we need to just bring visibility to the things we have done and stay open, but also meet together in a comprehensive manner. And if that is, I certainly want to call it brainstorming, but if we have a list of things that we know that people are going to need help with, we need to prioritize those and decide how we're going to help people, um, businesses and residents in a systematic manner so that we can help the most people. I just don't want to be doing it. And I I really appreciate this business owner. I appreciate Amy and the DBA Board bringing the requests forward because to me, the first thing I thought is we really need to have this conversation as a city council sooner than later. And I understand that we're kind of the final point of approval. So having, coming early and having this conversation early with us, it's really great because it sparks in my mind, you know, all the future conversations that we can have. But I feel like us as a city council, we need to get our act together and put a vision together how we see this help rolling out as a matter of policy. And once we decided that, it will be a lot easier to work with organizations who need that help in a way that is very fair. So I would recommend that that is our next step. And if that's possible, or, um, that that would be my recommendation, Mayor, is how we proceed. And I am open and I want to listen to creativity. I just think the business owners are in a better place to have that creativity than I am. So I, I, I don't know, I don't know how I feel about this particular subject because there's a lot of open questions. And like everyone has already said, it wasn't meant to be a comprehensive proposal, but it just sparked a lot of thought in my mind about for a policymaking body, as Joe said. And we have to do things in a policy oriented way. So we need to step back from individual things and get in our plane and take the 30,000 foot view and look at all the needs and decide, what are we going to do with all the needs that we're going to have in front of us and how are we going to do it in the best, most efficient way that is fair and treats everybody, you know, as an important member of the community?
Balsonic?
Am I on? I'm sorry.
Your Honor.
I am. Uh, and and just a reminder to the businesses out there who would like to do something creative. You know, this whole pandemic is a moving target and we've got state changes that are occurring sometimes on a daily basis and federal changes that are occurring sometimes on a daily basis. So, uh, be ready for some kind of a knee jerk reaction as well. If you've got a plan and suddenly, you know, may, maybe all of a sudden we've got to shut things down again. Uh, we just don't know. We just don't know. We, you know, we've got modeling out there, but everybody's got a model and I'm not sure if any of them all agree with each other. Thank you.
And this is Tina.
And yes, go ahead, Councilmember.
I was looking at who are the participants that are in the galley, so to speak. And so I see that, um, we have, uh, we have some of the board members of the DBA, we have Amy Fax, Amy Van Zee and Tasha Nelson. Um, and so I, we're just gonna see if any of them wanted to.
And so I was just gonna see if any of them wanted to speak by, I think they would raise their hands or.
Sure. That's what they're asked to do. If anybody would like to speak, there's a raised hand motion you can add to. Not seeing any. Okay. Okay. And I'll just add, you know, I, I'm, I'm with everybody all over the page. And I think it is important that the discussion was started.
Your honor, I believe you have somebody.
Sure. But I'll just finish. You know, the discussion was started and I think that's what needs to be done. I too am concerned that it's not just for the DBA, it's for the whole community and their businesses and what we can do to help. So Nelson is that, did you want to speak?
Uh, yes, I think I, okay. I didn't know if you could hear me or not.
Yes, I can.
So I just wanted to say that we kind of were looking at this quickly and that's why we were kind of just coming to see if it was even a possibility to, you know, lift some restrictions and fees. And we are having a DBA meeting tomorrow night and we're encouraging everybody to join so we can get opinions. And yeah, this isn't, we're not asking for anything. We just kind of wanted to bring this to your attention and just kind of get it in everybody's heads was really the point of it. And we don't have a plan yet, but we are going to obviously try and work on something with everybody down here because everybody has different businesses. So we don't know what the right answer is, but we certainly want to try and work with everybody around us because I want my neighbors to do well, as well as everybody in the city.
Sure. Anyone else want to speak in the audience? Okay. No other discussion from council. Okay, at this point then, I would accept a motion in the request for a discussion with the Downtown Business Association and the other appropriate entities about creative solutions for potential business relief.
This is Tina.
Councilmember Foltz. Councilmember Vaughn.
Can you repeat what it is we're, we're voting on? I'm not sure.
Motion regarding the request for a discussion with the Downtown Business Association and other appropriate entities about creative solutions for potential business relief.
I'll second that, your honor.
Trevor, you still have a question?
I'm not really sure. I, I, I heard it, but I'm not really sure exactly what it is we're, we're agreeing upon.
To continue the discussion, deciding on how we can help relieve the businesses and, and help them out. The discussion, I think it's virtually.
Got it.
And Councilmember Vaughn, did you have a question?
Clarification, I don't agree in that. I just didn't know we needed a motion. I guess it's for legal counsel. I don't see a, a resolution of this. I think it's just a, you think it's okay? And I think we already had that discussion, but it's for legal matters.
Dan, your thoughts?
I think if the council wants to establish the direction for the staff to, and to pursue this, I think it's okay to have a motion. I think it's a pretty loose motion. I would say it's not, doesn't have a lot of teeth to give any specific direction, but I think it's to discuss it. If the council was not inclined to have a specific resolution for this, I don't think it's necessary. I think the message has been sent to staff and other council members to can, to pursue the discussion. So I really think it's, it's, it's a little symbolic perhaps. And, and I think you could go either way.
So we, Councilmember Vaughn.
And this question is for Dan again. What I'm worried about is if we put a resolution that we, or a motion, whatever it is, is this just going to delay us two weeks? So next council meeting, we're going to have to approve that resolution in our consent agenda? Or if we don't have a motion, just we're giving direction to staff to move forward?
There, there does not have to be a written resolution for an action. The council can take that based on how the mayor described the motion. So it, it, there would not be a comeback on a consent agenda item. Again, I think it's a, it's a general directive to and staff to pursue these discussions. I don't see any harm with it, Councilmember, but I don't think it really binds the council to do a whole lot other than keep an open mind and have some more discussions.
Any other discussion? Councilmember Vaughn.
Your honor, then I'm just going to ask that we look for amendment to make sure that this is not, say, just downtown Business Association. That's what I heard. I'm looking to say all businesses, not just downtown. I don't want to get, talk about just this one item. I think it's important that we give staff direction that the amendment means that we work with all businesses.
Okay. Chair, Councilmember Lynn.
No, I mean.
I thought you.
Sorry, I mean, I, I guess effectively that's what the task force is tasked with. So just I don't know if we need to vote on it, but yeah, that's, that's fine. I was accidentally unmuted, sorry.
Sorry, okay. So we do have a motion on the floor by Councilmember Balsanic. Do I have a second?
Your honor, if I could, I think you, you've got a first that I believe was made by Councilmember Foltz on the main motion and seconded by Councilmember Balsanic. So you did have a, a primary motion there. I'm not totally clear if, if Councilmember Vaughn was proposing a first to an amendment there to that motion or not. Maybe we should clarify that. If so, then there should be a second on the, on the motion to amend. If not, then I guess the motion could be withdrawn to amend.
Councilmember Vaughn.
Yeah, thank you, your honor. And I do, I'm, I'm making amendment that it is not an expansion area for downtown businesses only, it's all businesses. Get rid of the.
Okay, and Councilmember Lynn seconded. Final council discussion. Clerk Flatt, would you call the roll, please?
Vaughn.
Yes.
Councilmember Foltz.
Yes.
Councilmember Balsanic. Councilmember Balsanic.
I'll get this eventually. Yes.
Councilmember Lyfield.
Yes.
Your honor.
Yes.
Your brother.
Yes.
Yes. Motion prevails.
And your honor, just to be clear, that was the motion to amend. So you now have the main motion as amended and you will need to have further discussion, if any, and then a vote on that.
Any other discussion? Casey Ngan, Clerk Flatt, would you please call the roll?
Councilmember Vaughn.
Yes.
Councilmember Foltz.
Yes.
Councilmember Balsanic.
Yes.
Councilmember Lynn.
Yes.
Councilmember Lyfield.
Yes.
Your brother.
Yes.
Yes. That motion prevails. Thank you all. Okay, council members, do you have any announcements? Okay, I have a queue. Tuesday, tomorrow night is a headroom meeting at 6:00 PM. Monday, May 11th is Planning Commission meeting at 7:00 PM. Tuesdays, May 12th, Parkinson Rec Commission has been canceled. A May 14th, 6:00 PM is a headroom meeting. Monday, the 18th, 5:30, we will have a workshop on the 2021 budget and our 7:00 PM council regular meeting. With that, I would take a motion to adjourn.
Also move.
Brax and Councilmember Balsanic. Clerk Flatt, and please take the roll.
Councilmember Vaughn.
Yes.
Councilmember Foltz.
Yes.
Councilmember Balsanic.
Yes.
Your Lyfield.
Yes.
Your Lynn.
Yes.
Your brother.
Yes.
Yes. Okay. Thank you all.
Thanks, everyone. Have a great evening.
Thank you and good night.
Night.